All right. This is, excuse me, this is Wednesday. Thank you. This is Wednesday, March 2nd, 7:00 PM. This is the special business meeting for District 96 and committee of the whole meeting. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Mr. Barsati.
President.
Ms. Gunn.
Here.
Ms. Kleiber.
Here.
Mr. Marhol.
Here.
Mr. Beerhead.
Here.
Ms. Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Hunt.
Here.
For Mr. President.
All right. So at this time, I have three in-person public comments. Let's see, as I call your name, could you step forward, step to the microphone there? If you could try to limit your comments to three minutes, that would be appreciated. We will have the clock running, and if you hear the alarm go off, then you could try to wrap things up. That's all appreciated. All right, first is Ellie Barsati.
Hi, my name is Ellie Barsati. I'm an eighth grade student at LJ Howser Junior High School, and the first thing I want to do is thank the board for giving me this opportunity to speak here tonight, and to the board and administration for keeping us safe and in school. Now, like most of my classmates, I have grown up in District 96, and for the first six and a half years, we were in person, in school, no COVID, no masks, but then COVID hit, and we went all remote. Today, you are going to be finalizing the decision to make masks optional. I am here to ask you to maybe rethink your decision. Here are some reasons why I think you should possibly rethink your decision. One, some students, teachers, and staff are immunocompromised. This means that even if they are vaccinated, they have a greater risk of getting COVID. And if they, if everyone's not wearing a mask, then they have an even greater chance. Two, the youngest kids in the district, i.e. the kids in preschool, cannot get vaccinated. This means they have a greater likelihood of getting COVID and with worse symptoms if not everyone was wearing a mask. Three, this year, there have been less illnesses, which has led to less absences, which has also led to less makeup work, which has led to more work turned in on time. Four, hospitals are still required to wear masks, that is, patients, visitors, and staff. Five, there was a COVID spike after winter break, and so who knows what's going to happen after spring break. Six, there have been some times I've overheard kids talking in the halls about having COVID and being in school. Thank you for having me here tonight, and I have a petition that I've passed around the school that I got people to sign to say that we would like masks to be mandatory.
Next is Mike Dobbins.
First, I just want to commend Ellie because that's really incredible as a teacher, someone who's in eighth grade coming up here and talking to everybody. It's very impressive, so I commend you, although I'm going to disagree with you. I'm Mike Dobbins, a parent here, first grader at Blythe Park. I was not anti-mask initially. I'm glad that you guys initially did that, and eventually I've come around to seeing more data and more evidence that there's probably more damage that masks could do, and so I'm here to advocate for the people who want to thank you for not requiring masks and make them optional for parents. So first of all, we know a 90% decrease in COVID since the high, say, dramatically gone down, 70% plus decrease in hospitalizations. California, New Jersey, Connecticut, Massachusetts, Delaware, New Mexico, New York, Maryland, Oregon, and Illinois, all the most liberal states in our country have decided to go mask optional for students. Hawaii is the only state now that is requiring masks for students. Elementary school students are the least likely to spread COVID and the least likely to have bad outcomes, but of course, the state of Illinois granted adults, for some reason, the ability to go maskless first, which of course doesn't make sense in my mind, but that's how it is. So I think it would be hypocrites if we allowed ourselves to go unmasked and then we masked the kids. I think that'd be cruel as well. Additionally, more mental health experts are coming out and saying that they're sounding alarm, basically, that the long-term impact masks could be detrimental to children's development, their ability to learn, their mental health. Masks are not neutral, they are not normal, they are, there are countless unknown potential negative consequences. By the time any studies are done, we will not, it will be too late because all the damage will have been done to our children. So it's not time to wait and see what studies say about the mental health or whatever development might be caused, delays that might be caused due to this. So it's important to me to let you know that that's one of the biggest reasons that I think we need to take masks off because there are a lot of kids that are having mental health effects because of it. The next thing I just want to touch briefly on is I know a lot of you guys looked to other sources for your resources. You're not doctors, you're not, you know, health professionals like that we, that we've been looking to during this whole crisis. But one of the things I would like you to do is trying to look outside the United States because the United States, in my opinion, is compromised with politics, the way this has become so political. So I voted for Joe Biden, so you know, you all know which end of the spectrum I'm on, but this has definitely become like a left-right thing, which is very obvious. So I think it's important to look outside, to look at like Europe and other countries that have different policies, and it's become a lot less political in those countries. The UK, for instance, from the beginning emphasized they don't see a place for face coverings for kids, no students are mandated in the UK. They say, and I quote, "The potential harm exceeds the potential benefits because seeing faces is important for the social development and interaction between people." Denmark, Iceland, Switzerland, Norway, Ireland, Sweden, masks were never recommended for primary school, and they have had better outcomes than our country. The European Center for Disease Prevention and Control recommends against the use of masks for any children in primary school. So again, I just ask that you look at other experts. Lastly, I just want to conclude that it's important to give parents a choice. That's all you're doing here. We all making a choice right now if we want to wear a mask or not. I think it's important to let parents give their children the choice to do that as well, and I thank you again for your decision. I hope you uphold it tonight.
Let's see, I'm going to mispronounce this name, my apologies. I believe it's Jeff Bu- Bu- Ren- Ren- I'm sorry?
Porzannis.
Porzannis, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and I'd like to thank, it was Ellie, right?
Yeah, Ellie, for exactly how you were saying, like, great response, and I'm on your side. I've got more of questions than anything regarding the mask mandate and like removing the masks. I mean, do we know the student vaccination rate? Are we at herd immunity for like students being vaccinated? I know we registered our daughter as somebody that was vaccinated, but are we, are we looking at that for all the kids? I mean, what are the, what are the current plans now for testing kids who have had COVID? I know my daughter had COVID about a month and a half ago, so she's not able to get saliva testing right now. With, with the spike over the, over the holidays and over the new year, like, I'm sure there's a bunch of other kids that had COVID, now they're not being able to get saliva tested. I mean, my family is vax boosted, everybody, and then we all got COVID like in January. That was, we didn't go anywhere, so I mean, the only, the only thing we did was send our daughter to school. I mean, it's obviously, it was obviously in the schools, and I think, I mean, chances are that's where, that's where it came from. Also, what's, what's the current plan for when and if a kid does get COVID at, at school? I mean, now that masks aren't, aren't in place, does, I mean, all the emails that we got whenever a kid got COVID, they said like, we were following all the protocols, masks were in place, social distancing, but, I mean, there'll still be social distancing, but no masks, like, so is, does the whole class go on quarantine? Because I mean, I said, that's a even bigger disruption for everybody to go on quarantine for a week. And one of the final things is like, I'm really worried about the teasing and bullying that could happen. I know when I brought my daughter to school on Monday, and I emailed Martha about this, like, I, I heard like the kids calling out like, hey, this person's wearing masks, this person isn't, and all that, like, I'm just worried, like, it's innocent now, but what if it does become teasing? I know part of the policy moving forward for kids, when kids do get COVID, that they're on quarantine for one week, and then they have to wear a mask at school for the following week. I mean, that's kind of like, in my mind, that's a scarlet letter that, for the kids to wear for a week. Those are just my thoughts on like, and questions about the new, about the mask mandate and some of the things that I'm concerned with and that I'd, I'd truthfully like to get some clarification on. Thank you for your time.
All right, is there any additional in-person public comment? All right, if not, we will move to emails we've received previous. I think Linda and I are going to trade off tonight.
Do you want to go first?
I can go first, sure. All right. Dear D-96 school board members, I strongly urge District 96 to make masks optional in all schools. The medical community has established that children are at an exceptionally low risk for COVID. It is long past time to reverse course. It was disheartening to see the board's complete disregard for parents' opinions on making, on masking our children at the February 16th meeting. You no longer have buy-in from the community. We're no longer in this together. Forcing children to mask for seven hours a day undoubtedly interfering with their education when they all remove their masks at 2:55 and head to a friend's house makes it a total waste. We have real-world examples in neighboring states and now districts proving that by prioritizing in-person normal learning and children's mental health, we will not suffer worse outcomes. Deaf and hard-of-hearing autistic and special needs children often cannot properly wear a mask or learn while trying to do so. Due to district protocols, a mask exemption does not allow students the peer interaction that has already been severely minimized over the last two years. This is not providing the least restrictive learning environment as required by ADA. The past two years have also created many obstacles for teachers. One continues to be teaching while masked. As a parent, I would prioritize my child's teacher to be heard and understood maskless versus the minute risk of COVID. It's unrealistic to think that we can mask to COVID zero. At this point in the pandemic, anyone who wants to be vaccinated has done so. It's time that we let parents decide if their child needs the additional protection of a mask. District 96 parent, Colleen Brooks.
All right, my turn. This is from Sarah Jansen. To the Board of Education of District 96, I am writing in hopes that the members of this Board of Education will rethink removing the mask mandates in District 96. At the last meeting, I heard several teachers implore this group to think about issues that they will have to deal with both personally and professionally. I stand with those teachers and ask that you all remember their statements. There are only three months left in this school year. Why can't we just keep the mandate through the end of the year, and then families can make their own choices in the summer? I want the kids to have the best school year, and it seems like making this change now will just cause undue chaos, and the potential for bullying surrounding mask choices will add one more issue to the teachers' already overflowing plates. I was personally bullied online by parents in this community when I made my sentiments about masking public. If that is how the parents are acting, I can only imagine how the kids will. Yes, the numbers are going down, and yes, this current strain has proven to be less lethal, especially in children, but the group I would like you all to think about is the teachers. Those with pre-existing conditions are putting their lives on the line just coming in to teach our kids. It is not fair that we, as parents and as a school board, put them in a position of being in a room full of unmasked kids. We should be doing everything in our power to keep our teachers safe and healthy. They have spent the last two years moving mountains to make our kids' education continue. It is the very least we can do for them. It is a mask, not a straitjacket, and people are still dying every single day. I do see a time in the not-too-distant future when we can safely have our kids attend school unmasked. I just don't believe that this time, the time is now. I realize this letter might, may be futile, but I had to send it so you could all see that there are parents out there who are thinking about this mandate in different ways. Please consider rethinking removing the mask mandate. I stand with our educators, and I hope you all will too. Thank you, Sarah Jansen.
Next one starts out, "This is over. Surrender, give up. You all sound like hypocrites. You've continuously told us that you're following the CDC guidelines, yet now that the CDC has rolled back mask requirements, you're saying the CDC is wrong. Please just stop. The love for family and teachers that has been around for decades has been ruined by people like you. It's a shame because people like me believe that you have to earn my respect back, and it should never have gotten to this point. I understand that it's all about compromising to get things done, but this is beyond crazy." And second email from this person starts, "And as long as you're adding things to be read in the public record, let it also be read that most families are enormously disappointed in the leadership in this district, which includes you and the board that you report to. Let me be sarcastic to the point, to point out the absurdity of the situation with one last comment to be read at the meeting. I have to assume that the teachers are still in fear for their health and safety, and thus I am fearful for them as well, and hope that they will wear masks through the remainder of the year and/or their career in education. And if it's unclear to you how I'm feeling, I'm like most other parents." Kathy Murray.
The next one is from Megan McHale Bodie. Or I might have said that wrong, sorry. Dear District 96 school board members, I am a parent whose child attends Ames Elementary School. I would like the board to vote to end the mask requirement and make masking optional. Given that the emergency mask mandate has ended, Governor Pritzker ended the mandate for schools specifically effective Monday, February 28, 2022, and the CDC said masks are no longer necessary in areas of low risk and transition, it is time to move on. Riverside falls in the category of low risk and low transmission, as does Cook County as a whole. The CDC has come out and said the cloth and homemade masks most children are wearing are not effective, especially against the newer variants. I think that was made extremely clear in December and January as Omicron swept through the United States. Numbers of cases and hospitalizations have been dropping for weeks now. It is time to end this and learn how to live with another disease, just like we do with the common cold, flu, strep throat, et cetera. The board has continually mentioned that teachers want the masks because they are immunocompromi- immunocompromised and need the protection. I question how many teachers in District 96 are immunocompromised, and were these teachers immunocompromised before 2020? Were they taking extra safety measures then, too? I have an immunocompromi- compromised mother who was a former teacher. She continually took safety measures to protect herself long before COVID and retired from teaching earlier than planned because it was not a safe environment for her health. She never asked others to do anything extra to protect her. She was responsible for her own health. The same goes for these teachers. Sometimes health gets in the way of your job, and that is unfortunate, but it happens, and people need to understand it is not the responsibility of others. I am sure all of these teachers who are in favor of masking are not going anywhere other than school, right? If school is unsafe, then surely the grocery store, restaurants, and friends and family's houses would be, would fall in that same category, right? It was announced on February 25th, 2022, that both Riverside Library and the Riverside Park District would be going mask optional in accordance with the state mandate ending and the new CDC guidance that was issued. As of February 28th, 2022, there will be almost nowhere other than the doctor and public transit that kids or adults will be required to mask, yet the board, for some reason, thinks they need to in school. Many other local area schools, including Riverside Brookfield High School, have also gone mask optional. Why is it that D-96 needs to mask longer, as was stated in the letter sent out from Martha on February 25? What makes the elementary and middle school kids different than the high school kids? What makes Riverside different? None of these kids are wearing masks when they get together outside of school. They are going to events such as ARB basketball games and enjoying their mask freedom. Why continue to force it in the classroom? Also, let's be honest, most of these kids are not wearing them correctly in school either, so what is the point? It is just for show. I'm sure there are parents and maybe some teachers who still believe that masking provides some benefits, and they are certainly more than welcome to continue to wear masks and make their children wear them, but it's time to let the rest of us to be able to make a choice as well. There's no preparation that needs to be done. We do not need to teach the kids how to go to school without masks. There were comments made about kids being fearful or removing the masks. Do we know that for sure? Do we know that for sure? Have we asked the kids? I do not know any child who, when given the chance, will choose to wear the masks. All other protocols can stay in place, just remove the mask. As I'm sure you are aware, the archdiocese of Chicago lifted the mandate weeks ago. I have a child who is also in a Catholic school, and there have been no new cases since the requirement was lifted, no additional measures put in place, no training of kids. There was 24-hour notice of the requirement being changed. There have been no issues. It was the perfect case study for the public school, and guess what? It worked. Time to implement this in D-96 as well. There was lots of mentions at the last meeting of concern for the early learners program since those kids are not eligible to be vaccinated. I have a child in the early, early learners program and am 100% on board with no mask. Those kids, more than any, need to remove the mask. As you are aware, there are many children in the early learners program due to issues such as speech delays and social emotional development. You know what does not help with those issues? Wearing a mask. Have we polled all of the parents and asked them their thoughts on removing the mask? I know several who are in favor of no mask. Have we polled those teachers? Many have made comments about how they are ready to be done with masking. Let's give these teachers one less thing to worry about. We can all agree COVID is here to stay. Time to learn to live with it. We cannot mask forever. We have put these kids through enough the last two years. Time to let them be kids again. Thank you for your time, service, and consideration. D-96 parent, Megan McHale Bodie.
All right. Dear D-96, I have to say, wow, how the science has changed in as little as 10 days. The board meeting just 14 days ago had a unanimous vote of every member to keep children masked and never even considered the emails of parents pleading to unmask the kids. You all said it was too dangerous when the rest of the country had, has done away with masks for some time. I want the board to know that you've done a terrible job of running D-96, and I have zero faith in all of you. You are here to do what's best for our kids and also listen to what the parents want. You've done neither of those things. I believe we would be masked forever if you didn't think we would throw this, this district into a lawsuit based on the court ruling in February. I believe it's time for a new board and for those that will be forever scared without a mask to find new professions that allows them to stay home and feel, feel secure. I'm very happy that the state of Illinois is forcing you to move on. Thank you. Courtney Zaworski. All right. Is there any additional public comment? Okay. Well, at this time, is there any, are there any board member proposed changes to the agenda? All right, then that will bring us to the old business discussion. Is there a motion that the Board of Education affirm the resolution regarding local control to mitigate COVID-19 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I have something I have to rephrase with everybody.
Okay.
What I have to say is actually not my opinion on the district's mask policy. It is to share my concerns about transparent board discussion. The process that led to the change in policy was, in my opinion, not appropriate or consistent with the goals of the Open Meetings Act to conduct the people's business openly. This board met on February 16th, addressed the mask issue, and agreed to revisit it on March 2nd at our next public meeting. However, last Thursday, February 24th, I was told by the board president that, quote, "We are all in consensus in favor of repealing the mask mandate, and also, we're going to repeal it." He further told me that, quote, "We would not like to wait," and that the meeting will be on Monday. Neither the superintendent nor the board president had asked me to give my opinion about the mandate, which I hadn't even decided, or about whether I could attend a Monday meeting. The public certainly didn't know any of this. This was before our district weekly COVID testing dated due to come out the very next day. No guidance from the CDC, the state, or ISBE had come out yet. This was a complete surprise to me, and I was shocked that the board would decide on these actions out of the public eye and without public discussion, as was promised at the last meeting. What is most disturbing to me is the fact that families who wrote in about their concerns on either side were told that the board was committed, was committed to revisit the issue March 2nd with thoughtful discussion, when in reality, the decision seems to already have been made. The specific reasons as to why the Monday meeting was never held, I do not know. The superintendent's abrupt decision on Saturday morning to override the board's policy and act contrary to the communications to the families the night before was made without my feedback. Most importantly, I do not understand why it was told Thursday that the board would vote to repeal before any public discussion and before many of the metrics that we had said we wanted to see were released. I can only guess that there were phone calls relaying information or some kind of walking quorum. I strongly believe that our goal should always be to strive for public discussion and public actions. I will not be voting on tonight's resolution, which supplants the motion from February 16th, because I do not wish to support a process that was significantly flawed. Thank you for listening.
Okay. Thank you, Sherri.
Can we respond, or?
Sure.
Of course. And again, I can only speak to my own observations of what I was told.
Of, yeah, absolutely. My, I can just share my experience. I had many conversations with Dan last week, just me and Dan. There was never a conversation with anybody besides a one-on-one. Dan, I think, was calling the board. He was calling people, reaching out to people to see where people were on the issue. So when he said, "We're voting," I don't know what he said, it was probably that he had talked to people and knew where, like, that maybe he talked to the board and we were there.
He knew we were in favor at that point. There were enough in favor to pass the motion.
I also had reached out myself to several other board members to, to discuss, which is fully allowed under the Open Meetings Act, to have conversations. I had a conversation with Stephanie. I had a conversation with Wesley. I didn't have time to have a conversation with everybody, but I wanted to, I was getting the pulse of everybody in that way. I'm sorry you feel the process was flawed. I understand this was not typical, but we're, you know, I think we are in a pandemic, and decisions get made faster. We live in a digital age that don't, that doesn't always align with the two, every two- to three-week board meeting. So I don't believe anything, I feel, I'm, it's unfortunate you feel that way, but, I mean, that's just my response. That I, there, from my knowledge, there was no process violations in place.
Yeah, that's, I think that's why I called it a walking quorum, which is exactly what you described.
But that, but that is not a violation of the MoFAM.
It may not be legally, but I, I do take the question, the ethical reasons.
Don't you at times, don't, do you not at times reach out to other board members? Because I do all the time. When I have questions, when I want to guide, you know, get the pulse of what's going on, I don't, as a board president, I, I'm not the board president, so I don't need to reach out to everybody. I reach out to people all the time, and that is perfectly legal via OMA.
I think it was when I was told what the board would be actioning, or what their actions would be, that made me most troubled, and especially in a meeting that I had never heard of. So that's, I'm going to leave it at that.
Well, if we all recall, last week, we were all getting lots of emails on both sides of the equation, so for and against, and so there was a big push, and I'll let you know. I mean, I, I know, because I did the same as Linda. I called around, I didn't talk to everyone, but I called around to just sort of get a pulse. I was adamantly opposed to moving that meeting to Monday because we have to, we agreed to it, and for whatever reason, I believe it had to do with scheduling, I'm not sure, we weren't able to have it. So I, I understand that, but there's, there's, I don't want to say there was no lack of transparency. We were trying to navigate a very difficult situation last week, where a lot of things were changing literally sometimes by the hour, and so new things were coming down.
Imagine if one board member is absolutely astonished and surprised and has no idea what anyone's talking about, what the public would understand. I just want you to consider that. Would they, how would they feel considering that I am a board member, that I had no idea about what was told to me, how the public might feel? That's all I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I hear what you're saying completely. As this board member, I had no idea who was talking, who had been, I assumed it was being relayed to everybody, so I, you know.
I think that's my point. We should be talking in public. That's what we promised when we were board members.
But I don't, but there was never a decision to not talk in public, right? I mean, there was always going to be a-
I was told what the board would be doing with the resolution on Monday, and that's wrong.
If I phrased it improperly, then perhaps that's on me, but at the same time- But at the same time.
I was told that it would be repealed.
I had spoken to the entire board, and I'd spoken to every member of the board, and there was a consensus at that point that we needed to move forward.
No one asked me my opinion, because, and I'll tell you something, I didn't know it at the time. Because I was waiting for the CDC and all the other things that students stated that we promised to look at.
But when I've spoken to you in the past, Sherri, you specifically told me never to ask you how you're voting on an issue.
Well, that's important too, because I want to talk in public. That's what we should be doing.
That's what we were going to do, and we couldn't do it.
We can't do it.
Well, we're doing it tonight. We couldn't do it on Monday because, we couldn't do it on Monday because Riverside TV was not available due to a planning and zoning committee meeting. I think you said you weren't able to attend, nor was Wes able to attend.
I said I wasn't able to attend the minute that you told me. And I'd never heard of the meeting.
Right, and therefore, we didn't have the meeting.
So you didn't have it.
Yeah, that shouldn't happen. It shouldn't happen.
I think we shouldn't do this conversation to the.
I'll leave it at that.
It doesn't really have much to do with the motion, I grant you.
I think it has everything to do with the motion.
Well, we're discussing it now, so I think we need to discuss the motion.
That's my point. Yeah, and I will not be voting, because I just truly think there are too many flaws in the process. I appreciate you saying, I really do.
Is there any further discussion?
I mean, I think so, yeah.
I would imagine, yes.
Wesley, did you?
Go ahead, Wes.
Yeah, all right, I'll jump in.
Sure. Yes.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Wes.
Sorry, I had a question on the back phone, so I'm not really sure. And there's a significant delay on YouTube, so I'm trying to watch while I participate. I'm trying to feel like I'm there a little bit more. I totally appreciate where you're coming from, Sherri. I think on Thursday, I had not made a decision at that point, too. There was a number of pieces of information that I was waiting for as well, which is part of the reason that, I personally think it was pretty clear in our last meeting that there were so many things going on, just with the timing of our meeting with some of these other decisions or non-decisions coming down with legality and medical advice and other things that we just collectively decided. I think most of you are having the same vote as me, which is why we unanimously voted to keep the masks on, that we need to see how some of this other stuff steps out. We were not part of the lawsuit. An executive order was still technically in effect. The CDC, Illinois, Cook County, none of those, none of that medical guidance had changed. And while there was a big push from people's personal opinions on both sides of the aisle, this is not one of those topics where a personal opinion trumps medical advice. And that's really where I was leaning on. And my biggest concern that I said at the last board meeting, and I'll say again, was the requirements to quarantine children. And so first and foremost, my viewpoint on this entire thing, the entire pandemic long, is how do we continue to educate our children? Because what I think has been factually stated is that children not being in school is detrimental to their education. I think a lot of people can point to a lot of different sources that can debate whether a mask is or isn't effective, or it is or is not detrimental. I don't think any study out there proves one way or the other about anything. It's just too early to know, and there's many flaws in the different variables that go into that. So I think a mask might be a portion of some of that, but there is nothing that can point to a mask as a direct cause of that. So with the CDC and everybody sort of trickling down through the medical community, advising that masks are no longer warranted on Friday, which was extremely poor timing, with Martha's email going out, I was very confused by some of the very negative, extremely negative commentary that we were getting in. And once we sort of, once I figured out that the timing was what kind of caused some of that, it made a little bit more sense, but I acted extremely disheartened by the politicization and just the overall vitriol language being used within this community directed at many different groups. It's just not productive. It's not helpful, and it, this is not a political issue. So with the changes in the guidance and the reduced requirement of quarantining and isolation and everything that will allow us to keep kids in school, I was actually in favor of by Saturday morning, afternoon, of going ahead and moving this. I was not in favor. I was absolutely opposed to moving our meeting to accommodate it, because removing a mask is not a medical health emergency. But a massive spike in COVID would be a medical emergency that I would agree to move a board meeting if so needed. But I think we followed the right, we definitely followed the right protocols. We have set this whole thing up, and we've made other decisions. Maybe not as important as this, but we've made other decisions by consensus and direction of the superintendent to execute and then affirming it later at a board meeting, just like we are now. So I will be voting in favor of going mask optional, which is the opposite of what I voted two weeks ago, but things have substantially changed. And that's all I really have to say to explain my decision and my vote tonight.
Thanks, Wesley.
Thanks, Wes.
Oh, I mean, I can go ahead and talk. Yeah, I, throughout this whole pandemic, none of this has been easy. Every decision is, there's just so much stress. And every person has a different opinion or belief based on something that is very real to them. So for me, when I hear parents and community members saying, "Please keep the masks on," I get that that is very real and very valid and understandable. When I hear parents on the other side saying, "Please remove the mask," I get that that is very real and very valid and very understandable. This, there's not, it's not like, oh, yeah, one's right, one's wrong, in my opinion. I can see both sides and both arguments. However, for me, as a board member, I've been very in favor of following public health guidelines. So while other school districts two weeks ago were moving to the 28th, I felt that I knew public health was changing soon, and that's where I was waiting. So for me, on Friday, when the CDC made their new recommendations and the governor made his announcement, I'm perfectly comfortable with going mask recommended or mask optional. I'm currently wearing a mask, because I know that I have colleagues in this room who feel more comfortable if I'm wearing a mask. If I were in a room with people who were okay with it and didn't, I wouldn't. Therefore, I just wanted to make sure, something Wesley said, like, we're all neighbors. We're all community. We're in this together, you know. I don't have kids in District 96. I have kids at the RV level. And the conversation I had with them before they went optional was, read the room. You know, if you are in a room where people are uncomfortable, think about those other people. Put your mask on, it does not hurt you. You know, my kids have been in situations throughout the pandemic where they're not wearing masks, because those are the risks my family has decided to take or not take. I really just want to just echo what Wesley said again, and just, we are a community of neighbors. We are all trying to do right by the children and the teachers and the staff and the family members in this district. And there's no time that any of us have had any ill will or ill intent or just are pushing some agenda. This is, this is a very tough decision in a very stressful climate. And I know all of our board members are taking this very seriously and being very thoughtful about it. I will also be voting in favor of removing the mandate and going mask recommended. But I also think, I know some parents have said we don't need training. I think there is a lot of social emotional support that needs to go along with that, because whenever there are differences, kids need to learn how to handle that and to be respectful in their community. So I do think there, you know, I hope there are some conversations going on at home and in the school about respecting other people's choices and, you know, and sometimes being kind to the person next to you.
Joel, there's Stephanie. We haven't.
I'm happy to go, or you can start somewhere a little, so. You know, since the beginning of the pandemic, obviously, this board has enacted various safety protocols to keep our community safe by looking at public health guidance. Many decisions that took place prior to me even being on the board. But similar to some of the voices that we've heard already, given the end of the mask mandate by the state of Illinois and Cook County and the recent changes in the CDC guidance, again, all of which the timing just could not have worked out pretty much worse than it did in our communications with everything coming down in real time. I agree that at this time, we should align our guidelines to these recommendations and drop our mandatory mask mandate. I do want to state, this is not necessarily because I agree with all of the reasons that have been provided in the various similar emails that we've received many of. To some extent, it kind of feels like an inevitability and changing tide. This does not feel as joyous as like full-day Kinder. That was a resounding heartfelt yes. And it's unfortunate that this has become such an emotional and divisive topic in our country and has bled into our own district. I do want to recognize that COVID is still spreading. Immunocompromised people are at high risk. Not everyone in our community has been vaccinated. And I would hope that, you know, some choose to follow the recommended language and continue to mask. I recognize for some, that might go in one ear, out the other. I also know that masking is for others and for the safety of others, and that's something that I'm personally going to follow and asking my children to as well. But yes, I will be voting to end the mask, mandatory mask mandate and go with mask recommended. That's it.
There's a lot of thoughts here today, and I think, to avoid getting too wordy, I think Steph, I'll pick a few examples of what fellow board members said, particularly Stephanie and Wesley. One is, yes, I did have a conversation with Martha on that Saturday and was in agreement that we, this policy was going to no longer be tenable in the face of the changing guidelines. And that's really where my vote tonight will be, is simply because we have to be in conformance and can't be an outlier to those health guidelines from both the state and the feds. I think that's important, and we can see where being behind the guidelines, some people don't like or were very upset about. We just read that today. As Wesley said, being behind these guidelines actually is not an emergency. So the anger that we're receiving in these emails is, in my view, incredibly inappropriate. And the fact that someone would dare say in public that we're not responsible for each other is equally, I'll use a word that, it's atrocious. That is not something we would ever try to teach our children in school, that they should stop caring. And I'll take any flak for saying what I just said. That's just absolutely wrong. And this board has, I think, always tried to do what is best for the students and our kids and trying to keep them in school. And that has been the goal since we started this two years ago. So for people to say somehow that the board is negligent, which is a word that was used in email, or incompetent, which is probably another one, or parents suggesting that we should, they should dismiss these rules that were put in place to take care of people, that's wrong. But again, I think Wesley's on the right track. And Wesley and I had a conversation last week, but we did not speak about votes. Now, I can't even think what he said. But it's not an emergency, but I think we do have to be in accordance with the current guidelines. And that's really where I'm coming from right now. So sorry if I talk too much.
I mean, from the very beginning, this pandemic, we have, I mean, the focus has always been, which has been, it's like the kids, the safety of the staff, the kids, and providing education, a quality education on top of it. I guess my perspective is a little different. I come from a healthcare background. I work in healthcare. My wife works in healthcare. My family works in healthcare. My best friend works in healthcare. We look at this a little bit differently than that. And while I understand we have to follow guidelines, I do feel that a lot of those guidelines recently, and when I say recently, are being pushed by public opinion and not necessarily the medical evidence. And so, for example, I just had, I was in meetings all day. My, I have to, my company requires vaccinations. Nonetheless, I still had to take a COVID test this morning, and I still had to wear a mask. And I do that both days. So this virus is not over with. And the thing is, we've always been looking at this virus as sort of, how does it affect this group? How does it affect this group? How does it affect that group? I'm looking at it as, how is that virus mutating? And what it's always going to be, it's going to be around. Let's just try to get it under control. And all I'm asking for is just a little bit more time. I do understand, everyone, the tides are turning. But I think if we just have a little bit more time, we can get this better under control to avoid a future spike. Because right now, my biggest concern is we're going to see another spike. And then we're going to be putting masks on again, and hopefully, we can still stay in school.
All right. Well, lots have been said already tonight. I would agree that it's, we're not doctors here. We're not public health experts. We have only the public resources that everyone else has to rely on. When we find ourselves out of step with those, with that guidance, there's not much of a choice to be made, in my opinion. It also timed out as an accident in the calendar that February 28th appeared to be a triple witching hour of a lot of mask mandates, a lot of guidance coming down all at once and changing in rapid fashion. So I believe that, while I was called on Saturday morning and told or mentioned my thought or asked for my thoughts on changing guidance, and I thought that we needed to react to it then, and as soon as Monday, to avoid distractions, to avoid confusion. It just would not have been a good environment for learning, in my opinion, had we not acted. And I also believe that we had, Martha had the right to act with our approval, which she did. And I believe that we are being accountable to the public by talking about it now. We are having our meeting. I'd also say that a lot of the emails that came in, thinking that we could just sign into Zoom, make a quick vote and sign out, it's not a great understanding of how the Open Meeting Act works. Nor following any of the guidance, the 48 hours of posting the agenda, having the meeting in public, providing an opportunity for public comment. There's a lot of things to that act that you can't just sign into Zoom, take a quick vote, and sign back out. It's not as easy as that, not as simple as that. I do believe, though, that our vote here tonight is clear. Our actions are clear, so I will be voting in favor. All right. And do we need to specify dates specifically? In the resolution, perhaps, that was mentioned?
The resolution refers to the resolution that the board reviewed on July 21st and then approved on August 4th of 2021, and that's represented in the draft resolution. And that does, Dan, as you pointed out, that actually provided authority to me to implement guidance, and especially if there were changes coming from the governor, the Illinois State Board of Ed, and the Illinois Department of Public Health, which is exactly what happened on Friday afternoon just this past week. The resolution does require that I consult with the board president before making a decision. I would never want to make a decision that has been as contentious and as challenging as mask-wearing in our schools without consulting with the Board of Education. So that was all done, as you've all pointed out, sort of in keeping with Open Meetings Act, et cetera. And thanks for those of you that were available on Saturday morning to have a one-on-one conversation with me. So the resolution, I believe, represents all the correct dates, because it really refers back to those, the July 21, August 4th, and then the date of effect that we would say it was adopted on this day, but maybe we need to add a line that the, it was implemented on February 28th.
There, Martha, there is, in paragraph five, it does note that there is an effective date to be determined by the board, so.
The February 28th.
February 28th, yes.
That would be appropriate.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Is there any further discussion?
No, I mean, I just want to thank everybody for being open and honest tonight and throughout these past two years. This is, you know, I've been on the board for seven years now, and I'd never anticipated this was going to be part of my. this was going to be part of my service. It's been stressful. It's kept me up at nights. You know, it's hard to hear what your community is saying and sometimes you take it personally. But I know that everybody on this board has always had the best intentions. So I'm just really appreciative that we could have these open, um, conversations where we can disagree and not always agree and be respectful and professional. So, um, I, I've said this many times throughout the pandemic, we're very lucky to have this board. So, um, thank you. I just appreciate that.
Thanks, Linda, for mentioning that. I, I do agree. I think everyone here has had the best intentions for the district, for the kids at heart in this. And as I've said often, we're just your neighbors. We're not public health experts. We're not, definitely, it's not, uh, decision on masking or unmasking is not the first thing I thought of when I first ran for the board. Uh, I don't know that that ever entered my mind at all. Uh, this is a situation we found ourselves in recently. So it is something that we are responding to it and taking action as appropriate, as we should. That is our duty. That's what we're assigned to do. Anything else? All right. Kathy, can you call the roll?
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Mr. Barham?
Aye.
Mr. Barsani?
Aye.
Mr. Mayorhead?
Aye.
Ms. Gunn?
Aye.
Ms. Kleiber?
I'm staying.
Mr. Gunn?
Aye. All right.
Dan, I was just going to add, I had, I had a presentation attached here and a health and safety update. Um, it's available on our website. I know there have been some questions in the community about how some of the things work, like a COVID symptom or vaccination, right? We've tried to again, be very transparent. Um, under COVID resources, it's the front landing page on our website. So our vaccination status is there, our COVID dashboard is there that tracks the cases week by week. We did do an update on just masking and, um, students who displayed COVID symptoms, COVID exposures, transportation, special activities, that kind of thing. I could go over it tonight or I can just refer people there. I know we have other things on the agenda, so.
All right.
Preference?
Would you, I mean, I, in, in my opinion, it might be good to go over it quickly tonight just for people who are tuned in or, or, you know.
Sure.
I know it might answer some questions that were also mentioned. Yeah, I think it would, it'd be a good, it's prepared, so we might as well review it.
Well, let's quickly run through this and actually this is the same format that we used and you'll see just there at the beginning that this was the same presentation from July 21st, August 4th, and now has been updated for March 2nd. As you know, our overall goal has been full in-person, uh, regular school day. This has been our goal since the start of this school year for our pre-K through eighth grade students. Um, we continue to offer that limited remote option for students who might be home hospital or through our West 40, uh, remote education program. Um, we do offer a remote education program, you know, it's the Zoom access for children that are identified with COVID. And we'll talk a little about that, um, the timing on that. Close contacts, this is a pretty significant change, that close contacts, uh, per the Department of Public Health are recommended to stay in school and for us to do tests to stay. So regardless of vaccination status. Um, our elementary school schedules are staying at that six feet of social distancing. I will tell you, it is something I've had a lot of conversation with already with the principals. You know, our goal is to kind of shift one variable at a time. Um, right now that's masking and we're going to keep lunch six feet apart. We know that it's not a preferred part of, uh, the day for many, lunch is often a preferred part. Being six feet apart is not what children love to do the most. So, um, I think as the weather gets nicer, et cetera, hopefully we'll have more options with that. But we're not changing that now and we will let families know if we do decide to change that. I just want to be clear, it is something we're contemplating. Because of the, the reason we really went to six feet was not just to reduce transmission, it was really to reduce close contacts that we found early on that if a child had COVID, we were all of a sudden sending six or eight or 10 other kids home. We really wanted to stop doing that. Now that close contacts are recommended for tests to stay, that kind of changes that piece of the formula. Our before and after care program through Riverside Parks and Rec, um, they will follow our same mask requirements. So now that will be a masks recommended but not required. Um, co-curricular, same thing. We've been able to move along pretty successfully doing our co-curriculars and our athletics with the mask requirements in place. And now it will be more to the, the modification that we have in place. Uh, for sports specifically, actually the host districts masks, mask requirement stands as what all must comply with. So I do think as of now, maybe all of our, um, athletic district is that a masks optional or masks recommended but not required. It was that transportation, um, all children were required to be masked on transportation. That was lifted actually earlier this week as well. So masks not required for students and, um, and staff. That was updated, um, by the CDC on Friday, um, then by the governor, then by the Illinois State Board of Education and by our Board of Education, um, really essentially on Monday we implemented and you affirmed it all tonight. Um, been a lot of conversation, I do want to share with you, there's been a lot of conversation internally and yes, my initial communication with families was we wanted two school days. We wanted the opportunity to talk to children. Um, we realized as things were changing so rapidly with all of the, um, other authoritative voices in our, in our state that, um, we, that's why I really wanted communication to go out on Saturdays so that families would have that opportunity to talk with their children. We know that it's very much an individual family decision. This is not a decision that teachers are making for children. This is a decision that families are making for their children. And that educators are supporting the family decisions regardless. We have had, um, this week, I would say the majority of our students not wearing masks. So I, I think early on, um, checking with the principals on Monday, I think it's Central and Ames that they would, they were guessing sort of about 70 to 80% of children not wearing masks. Hollywood was kind of the opposite. Blythe was estimated to be at 50/50 and quite honestly, Hauser was hard to tell in that there were a lot of kids who I think had their masks kind of down around their chins. They sometimes had them up, they sometimes had them down. But we have heard, and I've heard this, I do want to stress this, that, um, in talking to other superintendents that started this process a couple of weeks before us, people have not found that teasing and bullying is the concern, really that children, you know, who take their masks off seem to be happy to take their masks off. Children that have their masks on seem very content to have their masks on. And it has not been an issue. Um, we have been very clear with our fa, uh, with, uh, families, yes, but our staff, most importantly, that, um, this should not be used as anything to segregate or exclude students, that we shouldn't have a mask and an unmasked side of the classroom or anything like that, that we, it needs to be more of a fluid situation. And that's exactly how we've been implementing it since Monday. Staff members also have this choice. I know early in the week, it was probably about 90% of our staff members were still wearing masks. I have a feeling that that's modified just a little bit already over the past couple of days. So just a couple other things to reiterate. We will continue to offer Zoom access to children who are identified with COVID. Social distance will continue. Shield testing is continuing based on the current schedule. I did get a good number of parent questions about that. Interestingly, we learned today when they arrived at Ames School that they are requiring you to wear a mask into the testing zone. So, um, many children didn't have a mask. Shield had some disposable masks. We keep a good supply of disposable masks. We have asked families to sort of tuck a mask into their child's backpack, um, knowing that they will have to wear one, um, just when they go up into the testing area at Shield. Um, we have had a couple of families already today say that we're not going to do Shield testing because, um, it's just confusing for my child. It's confusing to tell them that they're safe without a mask and then to tell them they have to put a mask on. So again, we're going to work with families, we're going to see how that goes. I did reach out to Shield to make sure that that was a requirement. It is for them right now. We have the air filters in all our classrooms and our large group learning spaces. That's something we added last year. Certainly as the weather gets nicer, we'll open windows more and access to the outdoors. We've tried to do that as much as possible through the winter, but that's always a little bit of a challenge in a Midwest winter. Obviously, good hand hygiene and ongoing cleaning continues. So I just want to reiterate, COVID positive students will be excluded from school through day five of having COVID. On day six, they can return, but they must wear a mask through day six through 10. That's Illinois Department of Public Health requirement. That is not our own requirement. Um, I know one of the parents shared, is that a red letter? You know, it is very interesting. We talked a lot about this internally, not so much about the, you can come back day six through 10 with a mask, that, um, I've said, you know, how are children about treating each other having had COVID? And, you know, the teacher said, well, the child on Zoom is often like, hey, I'm on Zoom today because I have COVID. Like children have been very forthcoming about it. I think unfortunately, it's been somewhat commonplace in the schools that, um, many children, particularly if you look at our statistics from that time right after the winter break, many children did have COVID. And I think it just became kind of an understood part of, um, experience that children and their families were having. If families do not want their child or are unwilling to have their child wear a mask, they would have to stay home through those entire 10 days. Anyway, we are continuing to look at that COVID positivity metrics, exclusions, return to, um, mask protocols in conjunction with our public health partners. I know we've been asked by a number of parents, what would take, um, what would a required to put masks back on? And I really do think that it would be, uh, Cook County Department of Public Health or Illinois Department of Public Health that would be making that requirement for us. Um, I think if we ended up with a local outbreak, um, we've had that. We've had three cases in a classroom and you might recall that, you know, the first time that happened, they told us to shut the class down and send everybody home. By the second time it happened, it was, let's keep everybody in school and do tests to stay. So again, even, um, we know that public health has to assess these situations sort of in real time, um, based on the information that they have in front of them, which is a combination of what's happening in a classroom, what's happening in our community, and what's happening in our region. Um, so we have had to be sometimes very assertive in getting public health to be our partner, but when we do, I feel like we get very good and clear advice from them. So that will continue. So this is really where we're landing, that mask wearing is no longer required but recommended. Saliva testing will continue and will require that brief moment of children wearing masks to participate. Clearly, and I know you've all said it here tonight, just a very clear, ongoing commitment that the most important thing we do is having our children in school to learn in person and keeping them safe. Um, we have our ongoing commitment to making sure that the social, emotional needs of our students are met, um, related to mask wearing and not mask wearing, having COVID or not having COVID, but, um, really just in helping them be their best possible selves. So, um, as you, as you just shared, we now have an updated board resolution on all of this. So that's a very quick overview. We also, um, you all have it in your board book, it's up on our website. We have kind of a one pager, um, for everybody. It's, um, for families to refer to, really reiterates all of these same things. For students, I, I believe somebody had asked about students with COVID symptoms. So that cough, that sniffle, that sore throat, they're still going to need to come back with a rapid, um, antigen test or PCR test. We're not accepting at-home tests. Um, if child has a fever, even if it's a non-COVID reason, they have to be 24 hours fever-free before coming back to school. I already shared what happens if a student, um, actually has COVID. But I think that other really important part that I already reiterated is the close contact pieces is very different than what it was. So, um, I think I, I think I've covered everything that's on the one pager, but this is a easy, easy view for families and I encourage you to take a look at our website and I can send it home with families as, uh, another piece of information and important reminders. As I said, our, our vaccination status by school is up on the website also. And then that COVID dashboard's been up there throughout. So I encourage people to take a look at those resources. Any, any other questions or anything else I can respond to?
Thank you, Martha.
Yeah, thank you for sharing all of that.
Yes, definitely. It's good to go over there. All right. Shall we continue? All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, committee reports. And let me ask, was Wes still out there? I think I heard he might have dropped.
He dropped.
Yeah, he dropped. I just wanted to make sure that was known. Okay. Uh, so first under committee reports is the Policy Committee. Saving the best for middle.
Transition to May. And I don't know if we ever like do breaks or how break work, breaks work if people, if anybody kind of needs like a mental.
Generally don't do them.
I just want to check in with people before we switch gears and start talking about, okay. Wasn't sure.
Good idea.
So this is a continuation or part two of our still first reading of Press Issue 108. Um, at a prior meeting, we voted on the policies that fall under sections two through five. Again, those were like this, um, school board, general school administration, operational services and personnel. So now we're switching gears to those that fall under section six, which is instruction, seven, students, and then some that fall under like our collective bargaining agreement and that were not part of the Press 108, right? Separate. And so those are the few outliers as well. Uh, so kind of similar to last time, I, the first time we did the first part of this, I just kind of wanted to maybe take it by section and identify some of the, uh, larger, you know, kind of changes that I wanted to call out and then of course, open it up for any discussion or questions or things that perhaps you identified in your reading of the policies. Um, so under section six, which has to do with instruction, uh, for the most part, some straightforward updates to footnotes and, and legal references, but the few I want to call out, um, have to do with 620, just a reminder about the school, school year calendar and days. So just a reminder about that Juneteenth. Um, actually just saw and read about like the Riverside Village trustees, uh, making that a holiday as well. For policy 650, I also noticed there was a note, um, just wanted to note the attached memo regarding district employees like wellness screening. Martha, I wasn't sure if there was anything you wanted to mention on that, but I did see that it was attached, um, to the agenda, um, as well.
Probably nothing else to add. I mean, we do have staff wellness screening. We have good participation with that. And I think it's been viewed as a nice, a nice, um, opportunity for staff members.
There, there are some policies that need answers from us.
Yes, there are some policies. So we'll be sure to identify those, um, as well. So the first of that would be 660. And this, this one has a lot of curriculum up content. So, uh, the committee spent a lot of time discussing just, you know, the significant changes affecting this policy and the suite of materials. So given the changes that are reflected in the curriculum and sort of the implementation choices presented in the board questions that you referenced in, um, I am inviting Angela up, uh, to provide us with an overview on 660 specifically and hopefully answer questions that the board might have. So I will hand it over to you.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
660 runs, uh, through different curricular areas. And so what I can do is go just straight down 660 and talk to you about the changes and the different ones and just point out a couple of things about the changes. And then if you have questions afterwards, uh, Stephanie, Martha, and I can work on answering this. All right? So when looking at 660 for curriculum content, um, the first one added, uh, language about including the dangers of opioid abuse. Opioid abuse is covered in the eighth grade drug prevention unit. And then there was a piece in 660, number one, that talks about daily time for, uh, of at least 30 minutes provided to kindergarten through fifth graders for unsupervised, or not unsupervised, for supervised unstructured play.
Can you imagine that?
Imagine that law, right?
Uh, I think I have an issue with that one.
So there was a law that was enacted this school year that does call for supervised instructed, unstructured, child-directed play. Our elementary students have 20 minutes of lunch recess and they have an additional 15 minutes of class recess every day. Number two, there were no changes. Number three, there was the addition of, uh, the anti-bias education. And so anti-bias education is taught to our students. Um, although we do, uh, we have seen that there are areas for growth in that and areas for, um, some adjustments in how we teach our anti-bias education to our students. But we do cover anti-bias education and we do cover, um, methods for, um, prevention methods as well. And it's something that we discuss throughout, um, with our students and we also discuss daily with our, uh, students through our social, emotional pieces as well. There is a question with number three that says, does the district provide anti-bias education and intergroup conflict resolution? And so when answering that question, we do provide that. Um, and that is what we're providing regularly through our SEL discussions and also reactively when students have concerns or issues that might be brought to the attention of social workers, psychologists, uh, building leaders, they're also working on conflict resolution in that sense too. Number four, there's no change. Number five, there's no change. Number six is a new point. It's an added point about, uh, in all grades, students will receive developmentally appropriate opportunities to gain computer literacy skills. We do digital citizenship lessons for all grade levels and technology integration occurs throughout our curriculum. Number seven adds pieces, um, language about different parts of the government, representative government, um, for the American Declaration of Independence, the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and all of those are covered throughout middle school across grades six through eight.
Yeah, I just had a question regarding that one because I saw that, I mean, they did change it a bit. I guess.
I guess, how did they, is this like, are those changes mandated in state law? Is that why they?
Yes. Yep.
I couldn't figure out what the statute is because the footnote does say like updated to align with the Illinois state statute, but then it doesn't list out like what specific one it was.
And I tried to find the reference in the state statute and I could not find it either. So if there's an opportunity to figure out why we're removing freedom, justice, and equality, I would be very interested because that troubles me a lot in our current atmosphere.
And it also troubles me that we're taking out democratic principles and just saying principles of a representative government. I mean, Russia's a representative government, so.
We're not talking about that.
No, I'm not talking about, I'm just saying, people can say a representative government is, so I'd be interested in why, why we took out that and took out freedom, justice, and equity as well.
And I'll support David's point in that's, it's small d democratic, which is the classic American values rather than political party values.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, no, thank you, John. Thank you. Yeah, you're right, it does happen.
Anyway.
All right. I will look for the specific wording then and we're not getting that back to you.
We can probably get that from like just access to the right specific statute. I didn't realize that was a question, so we can look into that.
I will work with Kathy. I'm getting that for you.
All right, thanks.
Fort Angela can read all the statutes.
Martha, the.
Or I will, I'm sorry.
No, for, for, just for your reference, the Illinois School Code Statute runs about 330 pages, which is why I was trying to use search terms rather than reading it directly.
I'm shocked it's not longer, to be quite honest.
Anyway, I tried.
The, number nine, in all health, in all schools, the health education one, does talk about age-appropriate and evidence-informed sexual abuse and assault awareness prevention education in all grades. Our program that we utilize Victor Pacchini for is an evidence-informed program. So by using that program, we are meeting that, that part of this policy. The other part of the policy that is on here is that the superintendent shall implement a comprehensive health education program in accordance with state laws. So our Candor Health Program that we do, the programming we use for fifth grade, for sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade, that programming is our sexual health or comprehensive health education program. And in there, there is sexual education, sexual health education programming specifically for seventh and eighth graders who attend, as seventh graders attend teen sexual health one, and as eighth graders attend teen sexual health two, which is a continuation. And this policy, this part of the policy does have a question also, and this question is asking the board to select one of four choices, one of five choices. And what it boils down to is if we are providing education on consent, and we are, the Candor Health Program does include lessons on consent as well. And so that would be the second to last selection choice when you are at the questions. Number 10, there were no changes. And same with 11, there were no changes. And in 12, we have the addition of the contributions made to society by Americans of different faith practices, and then it lists out different faith practices are included but not limited to. Each of these points are covered across grades six through eight, with the newest piece, that additional piece being specifically covered in eighth grade. We are continuing to develop our resources that will address these additional groups as well as the groups that were previously mentioned. 13, 14, and 15 are, there are no changes. 16 adds the pre-enslavement of black people from 3,000 B.C. to AD 1619, as well as a study of the reasons why black people came to be enslaved and the study of the American Civil Rights Renaissance. And so that's covered in our sixth grade curriculum. And again, we continue to develop our resources so that we are able to further teach these added points. And then beginning in the fall of 2022, so this upcoming fall, so this is number 18, there is this new added point that all schools, in all schools, instruction as determined by the superintendent on the events of Asian-American history will include the history of Asian-Americans in Illinois, contributions of Asian-Americans towards advancing civil rights, and the contributions made by individual Asian-Americans in government, arts, humanities, sciences, and economic, cultural, social, and political development. And that is in response to a new law, a new state law, and it is something that we will be covering in eighth grade. And then 19, there are no changes. Any questions for, for me, for Stephanie, Martha on 660?
Just in quick review, it sounds like all the changes that are being implemented are already changes that are either in our curriculum or being added, like you're already aware and moving forward on those.
Correct. Okay.
I could summarize that.
And I'm not sure how, how we typically do the board questions during the first read. Again, thank you for kind of providing guidance on perhaps what we would be selecting with the two questions that are integrated into this.
Mm-hmm.
Question.
It probably would be a discussion, but I mean, I think also since we've had this discussion in advance, we'll probably have the questions answered by default.
Yeah, I think we would do in the most, like approve the policies episode with the answer being.
You know, because there's a couple of them, and I know we highlighted here, there all says one question to be answered, two questions to be answered. Sorry, David, I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying, that's how we did it. We've done, generally when we vote on it, it's like, we're voting to approve it with the answer yes or answer no.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on any of the policies that fall under six?
So then there was, not 66, I'm sorry. Yes, you're right.
Yeah, there were two questions.
So I guess, oh, go ahead. I guess my question is, where, do we have any objections with what we like the answers that we sort of give?
The recommendations to, for the first one about the district.
Could establish that, yeah.
Yeah, providing anti-bias training, the default being yes, and Angela providing the reasons for why we are answering yes, although yes, room for improvement, but technically we do offer anti-bias education. And then based on the Candor Health curriculum, selecting the fourth option from the second set of questions. That's the one that most, that aligns with the way in which our sex education curriculum is offered.
Yeah.
In that it includes both, it has the and part, portion of it.
I have no objections to either of those with Angela's explanation, so.
Did anybody else identify or have any other questions for any of the policies that fell under section six? Again, I noted the ones that I thought were the mentioning out loud, larger updates that were more impactful, unless you want me to go and read every, go through each one individually. But if that works for you all, we can move on to section seven. Okay?
Sure.
All right. So section seven, dealing with policies that have to do with instruction, just a couple again that I want to, go ahead.
Before you go to, there's a policy 6135. And when I looked at that policy, it seemed like it was only referencing high school. And I guess why is that in our, maybe I didn't read it right, but it seemed like it was just pertaining to high, like changes are, in the fall of 2023, the.
I noticed that as well. It's not applicable because it does mention high school, but at the same time, I think it's, since it's coming through press policy update, it's kind of a catch-all.
But usually the ones that aren't applicable to us, like, they don't come up. They remove them from our individual packet, so I'm not sure actually why this one would be included.
There is a line that says APP options include, but may not be limited to accelerating a student in a single subject, other grade level acceleration, early entrance to kindergarten or first grade.
Because I was gonna say, we're required to have an accelerated policy, so I was thinking, yeah, this I think does.
And haven't there been situations where eighth graders have taken?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so I do think.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I, thanks for that. Because I was like, I was especially, I was focusing, I mean, I briefly looked at it, but I was focusing on the changes, and it was, the changes are all by high school.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't have issues with the changes and I assumed because it appeared in our personal press update that it did apply, because they do remove the ones that do not.
Yeah.
Sure. Well, thanks, Stephanie.
I really appreciate the accelerated.
Good to bring that up.
We actually don't have a law in Kentucky that actually protects gifted students in a similar way, so I think it's.
I did not know that.
I mean, I suppose we could remove some of the green language that pertains just to high school, but the other pieces do, like even that, the part of the other sort of, I think we highlighted, including strategies to reach groups of students and families who have been historically underrepresented and accelerated programs to advance course work. So I think that would stay, there, there is some language here specific to AP or accelerated high school classes, and we could certainly ask for modification, but I think in general the policy applies.
I'm just looking at the, the one in board book, yes, just thinking. I mean, would be, yeah, would people be more comfortable if we're able to remove language that, well, the portions of the policy that don't necessarily apply to?
No.
I don't.
Like, I don't know if we can like, you know, dice it up that way.
We, on rare occasion, do have middle school students that go and take math class at high school, so I think maybe it all.
I feel like it's still kind of applies.
I just wanted, I mean, I just needed clarification, so, no, that's, that's.
I think it's fine and it's, we already have procedures in place.
Probably not worth the legal bill to ask someone to carve this out.
As soon as we ask press first, that's free as part of the service.
Oh, okay, yeah.
It tracks.
Unless, unless tell the streets after our own turn, which they sometimes do.
All right, well, thank you for noting that, David, and for that conversation. So some of the policies under section seven, again, just to note, so 720 harassment of students prohibited, just again, by way of reminder that the nondiscrimination, the complaint managers will be updated to include Angela and Chris Tarvalis and Lou of Don Tofano, so that update will be made in 720 specifically. 760 is actually timely, if you read the one attached to board book, it had language in there that was in place for the 2020-21 school year that affected non-resident students of District 96 staff. So we've removed that language, correct, at this time from 760. And press also added some updated language with regards to military personnel establishment 770, a couple different updates in this policy with one of the biggest changes, and personally I feel very timely, given what we're seeing these days, in this policy is allowing students to be absent for up to five days for mental health or behavioral health reasons without needing to provide a medical note. Prohibits schools also from requiring students excused for religious reasons to submit or an excuse after returning to school. So I know perhaps some people think this might be more high school-based, but again, these days, not at all, and mental health, as we know, is more important than ever, so I think it's a good policy. The other one that I also wanted to call out, let's see which one has, I think this one is the one with the board question attached to it, is 7160, student appearance regarding the Jett Hawkins Law. As most of you probably know, law named after Jett Hawkins, a four-year-old boy from Chicago who was sent home from school for having braids. Personally, I very much admire, admire his mother, Ida, who really went to work fighting to end hair discrimination. But essentially, this new law prevents schools from creating hairstyle-based dress code requirements and discriminating against hairstyles historically associated with race, ethnicity, and hair texture. It does have a required board question for discussion that allows us to expand upon the law's requirement of race, ethnicity, and hair texture, so I thought maybe we could discuss that. So the default is, is no, so I mean, I can read the question out loud. It's, it says, "The board would like to expand upon the law's requirement of race, ethnicity, or hair texture. ISBA will amend the sentence as follows. The district does not prohibit hairstyles or hair textures historically associated with historically, sorry, associated with historically associated with race, ethnicity, hair texture, or any other protected classes under Board Policy 710, which is the equal educational opportunities, including but not limited to protective hairstyles such as braids, locks, and twists. Would the board like to expand upon the law's requirement of race, ethnicity, or hair texture?" So in like reading 710, I don't know, I guess if it makes it more inclusive, 710 also includes protected classes such as, you know, religion, gender identity, sexual orientation, like why we would not also encapsulate those into this?
I, I, every time you say something, I often wonder, why can't we just make one simple policy say no discrimination, period, for anything?
Why do you have to list within certain classes? No, I.
It's just, because this is just like, because I assure you, there's going to be in like a few years, there's going to be something else.
That doesn't, sure.
That doesn't show up.
Well, I'll beat the devil's advocate here. The good thing is, is that it has us talk about this policy at the board table then, so that we can reaffirm our opinion on the no discrimination, so.
And I think it's based on actual occurrences that have come from cases and lawsuits and real experiences from actual families, so that's important to note, you know, to discount their experience.
But I actually agree with you. I'm not disagreeing with you in any way, I'm just saying.
But if I understand it, the default is no, but I guess we can decide if we would like to have the expansion, which includes that additional line that references protective classes under our policy 710.
Do we know why press has the default as no? Is that something we're able to add? Like, is there some sort of legal reasoning behind that? Or, I mean, because from, from where I stand, it seems very comfortably yes, but I don't know if there's some sort of.
I can support that question to press because why would you have, and I realize I'm somewhat repeating what you just said, but why would you have a policy that is specific only to race and ethnicity, but then ignores everything else?
Hasn't been brought up yet.
No.
I mean.
We can ask that question.
Can we pursue that? Can we ask that?
The question is valid, I think, because why, why are not, why do all protected classes not fall under this just by the by, as David indicated?
Yeah, if you could reach out, otherwise it seems like we have.
But it sounds like, okay, we could reach out to find out more as to why press's default answer is no, but it sounds like because this board would kind of be inclined to actually say yes. So are we missing something as to why?
Right.
They said no. Okay. We can do that.
Especially since we have a whole policy, the educate, you know, the seven.
710.
710 outlining it, it just feels like the both should be in line.
Noted. One of the other policies that falls under section seven, prevention of and response to bullying, intimidation, harassment, 7180, just, it provides updates and defines, again, why can't you just say bullying, but it actually lays out the definitions and examples and the forms, the many forms that bullying can take, as well as increased accountability if the incident is based on certain categories. Kathy, I think in this one, we also, we need to update the complaint managers as well to Angela and Chris. I wasn't, I think the one in board book doesn't have.
Okay, which number are you on?
7180 on page two, it lists the nondiscrimination and the complaint managers.
Okay. Oh, correct, yes.
So that one would also require updating to Chris. So that one would also require updating to Chris Harvallis and Angela. So seven one ninety, Student Behavior, also has a board question attached to it, specifically as it relates to cell phones. So the question, I think, is if cell phones need to be kept out of sight. And the default is yes, and if we say no, they would remove out of sight, but they still have to remain silenced or off. So, I mean, I'm assuming we would want them to remain out of sight. I don't know if people.
One other question, like, a big example, one of my daughter who's an RV, she has a teacher that has them. Martha can tell me the name, or Angela, or where do you answer your phone and give you those questions?
Take a little, like a mentimeter or.
Yeah.
Quizlet or whatever.
Mentee.
Quizlet.
And so are they, do we have staff that use phones in that way? Are they not using them? If not, I personally would probably like them put away.
This, sorry, the policy has basically, unless, unless it's being allowed specifically.
Oh, does it say? Okay.
So I want to make sure, yeah, is there, is there teacher discretion? Is there an opportunity if the teacher says, "Yeah, we're all going to look this up," or?
Yes, it specifically says the supervising teacher grants permission, so.
Or provided in a, you know, or even if it's part of like their IP or something, there's definitely exceptions.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it says in an emergency as well.
No, and I'll just give you a very strange, personal example of our French exchange student who came here a few years ago, is they were not allowed to even have them at school at all. It was very, very strict, so it was interesting.
Yeah.
The difference between our high schools and their, she was a high school student.
Yeah, I've seen photos of like those clear shoe racks, like at the front of the classroom, and students deposit them in there for some type of, you know.
My daughter's French teacher does that every time.
Although. They're supposed to be in their locker. They are supposed to be out of sight, but I'm going to double check that because, you know, there is, more and more, cell phones have sort of proliferated and even, also just even checking with elementary principals. I think it was such a middle school thing, but not entirely. So let, let me double check that out.
I, I would support out of sight.
Out of sight. And I find it interesting, too. I wonder, again, every time things get expanded, but even the extent of like now having iPhone watches, you know, they could still receive basically text messages. Maybe they can't TikTok or whatever, all the things off their phone. But to some extent, it still provides the functionality of the cell phone that's put away.
No, I used to have.
Depends on if they're close to their locker.
Yes, I used to have my students wipe their TI-85s because they would, you could put in information even for their coursework. So you'd have to wipe them ahead of time because they hold information. Not that they would do that, but just in case, so who knows?
All right.
Further discussion on that one? Let me see, then just, I think that is all of the ones that have board questions attached to it as well. Any other discussion on the policies that fall under Section Seven of Press One O Eight? Did anybody identify anything else that stood out to them? Again, I just noted a few of the ones that I thought were pertinent to talk about. The only one, there's another one, actually, just one more, sorry. Seven two nine zero, heavy stuff, but suicide and depression awareness and prevention. It did add specific, again, categories, identifying categories of students who might be identified at increased risk of suicide, but also there was language in there about making sure that support information, like suicide hotline, is printed in relevant locations, like IDs, any type of planners that are like personalized to the district planners, website, et cetera, so. I'm not sure how much of that already happens.
Yeah, you know, it's interesting. I don't know if it's in the planner. That's an interesting question. And our students don't wear IDs, so that's enough, but we do have it on our website. There is training. We have, like, we had worked with the Community Mental Health Group. I'm looking to you, Linda, because I think that was a group you were also involved with. And they put magnets, like, in all the bathrooms.
Okay, yes. And I think the planners, it was very specific language, if the planners are like personally logoed, printed.
I think we do have those, so it might be.
So it might actually be something we should be doing. So that was just one that I wanted to call out and note as well.
I'll get more information on that, yeah.
So then, just moving on to the ones that fall under our collective bargaining agreement. I might have you help me with these, because I wasn't quite sure exactly how they, how they come up, like how these came onto our radar, if they're just through press as well, or?
So when we have a new collective bargaining grant, my understanding is press reviews it and then looks at the consistency with the recommended policies. And so I think with, let me see, these particular ones, I think five two ninety.
Yeah, so five two thirty, which is the student discipline, just we, press recommended removing the language that refers. It says, "Please also refer to the applicable collective bargaining agreement." And they recommended that we remove that language because our collective bargaining agreement actually does not address student discipline, so it's just a minor change, but that's five two thirty.
And then five two forty is on suspension without pay. And this is one, I believe, that we did have Shelley take a look at. So, and again, this, for employees not covered under the applicable bargaining agreement.
And I think Shelley said the recommendation is to.
Simplify.
Keep, or, yeah, keep the current policy, the one that was most recent from twenty nineteen. Is that where she landed? That's the only one I have question on, where we landed on five two forty, personnel suspension.
Yeah, I believe that's one that when press reviewed it, she felt it was, they'd made it overly complex. She actually simplified that one. And there are very few employees, as you know, that don't fall under collective bargaining agreement because our, because it's really our administrative and district office team.
And then five two ninety was also one that was reviewed with Shelley. I believe there are some recommended changes to that policy as well that she made. So those two did go through her. And what you see is where we landed with her on it. Thoughts, discussions, questions on those specifically?
I think it all makes sense.
Last, those that require five-year review. So one was just a very minor change in the food services. And then the other one has to do with student assignment and intragistic transfer, just the commitment to neighborhood schools and flexible, what do you call it, flexible boundaries?
Yeah.
Which I know has been heavily discussed at board tables before, but it is for the five-year review, so.
And that's our, that's very unique to District Ninety-Six.
That's our specific language. But I thought they were fine to remain as is in the five-year review period.
All right.
That's all I have. So I have some marching orders on some outstanding questions from the board with regards to some of the policies that we reviewed.
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you.
All right, next is Education Committee.
We had just intended for this to be very brief, that, for Angela to give a quick update on where the math curriculum review process is.
We can have Angela speak to that.
Hello again. Really quick, an update just on where the math curriculum review team has been. As you know, we have sixteen teachers and elementary school principal, myself, and our MCMI math consultant working on reviewing five curricular resources for the upcoming years. We have been meeting since the beginning of November. We were reviewing curricular resources to ensure they align to the standards of mathematical practice, properly aligned to Illinois learning standards, and provide rigorous content. Beginning, the beginning of February, we completed our review of five programs. The five programs were Math in Focus, the twenty twenty edition, because we'll need to upgrade. If we keep Math in Focus, we need to upgrade the edition we currently have, so we wanted to review their twenty twenty, their most recent edition. Illustrative Mathematics, Bridges in Mathematics, I Ready Mathematics, and Everyday Mathematics Four. The review included a rubric to assess the habits of mind, the alignment to standards, and the content. And based on rubric scoring, we brought in two vendors, the vendors from Everyday Mathematics Four and I Ready Classroom Math. We are going to pilot Everyday Mathematics beginning March seventh and run that through March twenty-fifth, right before spring break. And then when we return from spring break, we'll pilot I Ready Mathematics, and that will run for three weeks as well. There are ten teachers from the review team who are piloting these two resources. The unit that they'll teach for each of those resources will align to the units their classmates, their peers are having in our Math in Focus curriculum, because we want to make sure that no students are missing out on any required standards content. Math in Focus was our third choice. The positives of Math in Focus, the twenty twenty edition, are that there are very good visuals and manipulatives at the primary level. It continues to have that pictorial, concrete, abstract focus that we like in math, where we teach the students math systems in a concrete manner, a pictorial manner, and then move to the abstract manner. And we could see that there were adjustments from the current, the addition we're using now to the twenty twenty edition. But what we found that, was that the adjustments weren't enough. So the challenges with Math in Focus were, it is still not aligned with the grade level standards, and it's producing gaps in the continuum of learning. The assessments are still not well-written, and we would need adjustments again. So that's the work we've been doing these past couple of years with MCMI. We would need to continue that work. The habits of mind are not well-covered throughout the curricular resource, and the manuals do not align with our online component. And so it makes the use of the materials for the teachers rather difficult. At the end of the pilot, we will determine the positives and challenges with the two curricular resources that we're piloting, and we'll determine at that point if we will bring a recommendation for a new resource to the May Cal meeting. Any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just had another very quick update. I know it's been our goal to stay current with the strategic plan and the work that's going on there. So I believe our regular cadence was to update on Goals Four and Five. Five is our stewardship of resources. Jim's not here. I think we've had some good financial updates. We know that just last, was it just last meeting? The approval for full-day kindergarten was very significant as one of our key strategic plan goals. As you know, I'm the goal champion for our family and community partnerships. That group has met a number of times. I just attach the agendas from our most recent meeting since the time we've ever had a board discussion about it. But what I wanted to maybe share more in detail, just sort of point your attention to, is kind of an informal agreement around the vision of that group. As you know, this is the one committee where we have teachers and parents working together around this goal area, and I think it's been helpful to kind of hone in on this idea that our purpose in being together is to find ways that engage families in more purposeful ways. In the future, we may look at some survey data, bridging gaps, where and when families don't feel connected, just increasing our overall level of parent engagement and parent participation, encourage student learning activities in the community through service learning and project-based learning, establish curricular connections with families, such as family learning nights. I know even the One Book, One School has been a value around that. Teachers talked about having like family math nights and family reading nights. And again, a lot of these things have fallen by the wayside largely because of the pandemic, but to consider how we may improve on some of those. Looking at, yeah, those curricular connections, I think I just said that. I think maybe I have that written down twice. And then even using an opportunity to use this group as kind of a sounding board around either traditional, regularly occurring events and activities, are they engaging, inclusive? Are there ways to improve? So, for example, one of the teachers that leads the Laredo Taft Overnight Field Trip, she's really been looking at feedback because the pandemic sort of put a total stop on that. It's kind of a good time to just reassess, and she came and did a presentation, got a lot of great feedback. I think really where it led was how really valuable that activity is, and it's really designed as a kind of fifth to sixth grade transition, really bringing students together to kind of interconnect among the four elementary schools that they may have come to, and certainly outdoor education pieces involved in that, and some project-based learning involved in that, really opportunities for student, teachers to have time with children outside the typical classroom environment. And so I think her coming to share, hmm, I wish this was better, I wish this was better. I think she just got a lot of really positive feedback about making sure and hoping that post-pandemic we're able to resume that, is just one example. Any questions about that? And we've had a lot of other things on the agenda, and so we will obviously continue to bring the strategic plan pieces back to this group for more ongoing discussion. I think that's it.
All right. Great. Then that moves us on to Facilities.
We are going to meet tomorrow with some discussions with DLA and Ramesh. And also Martha and I attended a presentation by DLA to the Blythe Park PTA, which was well-done, and it was, it was a very enjoyable discussion afterwards as well with the PTA members. It was good to connect with some parents, but that process is moving forward. DLA continues to look at the goals of trying to make the best use of our space and looking at that in the context of both what we want to do and what can we do. So we'll hear more as we move on. But they are in the middle of their process at this point, so not, not a lot to, nothing of final nature at this point.
All right. Thanks, Joel. Wes is not here, so no Personnel Committee. Last is Finance. No updates? We're coming to a close on a no updates. Fair enough. All right, then, all that said, so future meeting dates, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular business meetings, seven PM in the multipurpose room of Ames. Board will enter into closed session if necessary at six fifteen PM. Return to open session at seven. April sixth, twenty twenty-two is Committee of the Whole Meeting, seven PM in the multipurpose room of Ames School. And April twentieth is the, twenty twenty-two is the regular business meeting, seven PM in the multipurpose room of Ames. Board will enter into closed session at six fifteen PM if necessary. Return to open session at seven. And if there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.